President of the Flex and the Eages. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, October eighteenth, Facilities Committee meeting right here at seven AM. November seventh, General and Special Election, seven AM to eight PM. November tenth, Quarterly Teaching and Learning Meeting, seven thirty, right here in Conference Room A. And November thirteenth, Policy Committee Meeting, five thirty, followed by the Regular School Board Meeting at six o'clock. The Chair moves for the appointment of Natalie Miner as a student representative to the school board for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Welcome.
I'd now like to invite Mark Fenright up to introduce the chair's success.
Yep, come on up, come on up. It's my pleasure tonight. They introduced you, three of our monks, I got here tonight to share a little bit about a middle school robotics camp that they put together this summer. I just want to tell you just a really quick story. Rohan and Nora contacted me in June. They said, hey, we got this idea. We're going to run a middle school camp. And immediately, being a former middle school teacher, I thought, ooh, I don't know if they know what they're getting into. We had lots of talk about how we're going to do this and what it's going to look like. And they just pulled off this wonderful program. So I'm going to turn it over to them and they're going to share with you what they did and how it went and share some pictures and.
So we are some, not all of the Tonic Bots captains, and we all, like, we started as like a team of individuals who are interested in the STEM field and just people who love the challenge and people who love mechanics of everything.
Yep, so on our robotics team, Tonic Bots, at the end of each season, it's a seven, seven week, just building process, testing, designing, programming, all that stuff. It's very intensive. At the very end, we go to a competition up in Duluth with many schools or with many teams from all around the world. And we usually never placed that high, but we have improved over the years, obviously. Just as we've refined our process of, you know, building, testing, designing, all that stuff. And so it's a student-led program mainly. Of course, Mr. Kimball is there to supervise at all times and help as necessary, but it's mainly student-led. And yeah, it's just we, we teach CAD, CAD computer aided design coding and all other stuff that are used to make a robot run properly. So essentially, the camp emulated our process as high school members on a much smaller scale, on a more controlled, less, you know, there's less pressure and that kind of thing.
What is the competition each year in Duluth? Is there a set time that that is?
Uh, yes, it's the first, it's like February twenty-eighth to March third.
So it sort of kicks off right after the new year then?
Yeah, so the kickoff is January seventh.
Okay.
And so we have about two and a half, three months to get everything done.
So, um, yeah, I'll switch back and forth. So basically, yeah, like Mr. Fenright mentioned, Nora and I had this idea sort of earlier along in the summer. We're like, okay, we want to, you know, somehow raise money for our team. We also want to spread robotics to the community because it was mainly strictly in the high school. So after planning out the details, figuring out the financials, figuring out how much things would cost, pricing, all that stuff, we went to the community ed and they helped facilitate, you know, the advertising and all that stuff. And we also decided that all the team's captains and very dedicated members should be involved. So we have a pretty big high school team, but we wanted to choose, obviously, like I said, the captains and the more, most dedicated students to help, to help run the camp. And so like I said, the camp is just essentially a smaller scale version of our high school robotics team. And just, you know, the time, the amount of pressure, but also it introduced the students, you know, coding, not just on a very, you know, block programming level, but like true like typing based programming, CAD computer aided design and 3D printing too. They created 3D printed stuff. You'll see the images here in a second, but yeah.
So we also made an obstacle course that they had to compete on. So they had these little robots. We call them the roving robots. And they have like all the code, the CAD, like the CAD-ing and all that. They CAD-ed their own parts to attach onto their robots. And every one of them was different. And so they had a set amount of challenges that they needed to complete as well as how they could get points. And the bottom picture is a group all together coding and the top picture is them actually putting their robots together.
So we don't have any specific images. Unfortunately, I didn't, I wasn't able to get them in on time. Sorry about that, by the way. But each of the robots came in a kit, so it wasn't completely from scratch. But it had all the, you know, the control boards, the, the, all the little microprocessors, all that stuff. So as they're putting it together, we did our best to try and explain what each component of the robot was doing, how it contributed to the robot moving around. And I tried to keep it as like, as high level as possible so that they understood what each part of the robot, you know, what, you know, the coding does and all that stuff. We tried to keep it high level and not too in-depth and too like complicated for them. But enough so that they could, you know, use these skills later on in the future, like if they choose to join the high school robotics team. So I'm here, or, sorry about that. So on the photo on the right, they're coding, one of the groups is coding. And, you know, obviously, we're there at all times making sure that they're not getting too confused, helping them out when necessary. Bottom photo there, that's Ben. He is putting on his 3D, that's a sensor, I think. And he's putting on a sensor called an ultrasonic sensor that detects distance between objects and stuff so that, you know, this is pretty cool. And they thought it was pretty cool too. And then in the top left there, that's one of our team members on the right of that photo, Sam Fleaner. He said he'd be here and he is there.
Looks like, looks like we got him.
There's two of them actually.
Right into, on the right in the blue shirt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Fleaner, do you have anything?
No, I don't know. It was a great experience.
It was a great experience for both them and for us, so.
So do you guys have any questions?
How many?
Yeah, how many students?
How many students did you add up with?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, wow, great start.
So you think you'll keep doing it or?
Yes. So our expenses this year were a lot, obviously, since we had to buy all the robots and stuff. But now that we have them, next year, if we get the same expected turnout, our expenses should be much, much less than they were.
So you can reuse the robots where, would it be the same, would they be CAD-ing the same like obstacle course then with new kids or?
We will probably have a different obstacle.
Other than, because you have some kids coming back, right?
We'll try to refine it, you know, with this, these next few months that we have to make it. It was, we tried our best to stay organized through the camp, but obviously, they're middle schoolers, right? They're going to want to run around and do stuff. So our goal for the next ten months or so is to really figure out how we can keep our camp more organized and more, keep our process more refined and just, you know, overall make it a better experience.
Are you guys getting what you need for resource wise or is this something where you guys got to do your own fundraising? Or is it, is this stuff all supplied? But are you getting what you need to be successful? That's, that's one of the questions.
Yeah, I mean, we did have to do some of our own funding. We got refunded or like, because I had bought some things that we had needed. But other than that, like, we had gotten most of the, the stuff that we needed for this. And also, this is one of our fundraisers. So we can use the money that we got from this and the stuff that we get next year, which should be about double what we got this year.
So was it, was it a one-week camp for how many days?
Four days.
Four days for how many hours each day?
Uh, three and a half hours to four hours.
I like the one bullet point you had that said something about being able, thought you'd be able to keep the kids busy for, or what was that one right there? The three one, keep the kids entertained throughout the week. That's impressive with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to compliment you of using an opportunity for kids to also be your fundraiser. I mean, that's, that is a brilliant approach where it's an opportunity for them. It provides you a little bit of funding. Now, with your high school robotics program, this last year was one of your largest as far as enrollment. You had about thirty?
Forty.
Thirty, thirty, forty.
Fantastic.
And that, and that will continue to grow.
Definitely.
We have now a middle school first robotics team. So there's twenty middle schoolers right now that are meeting every Wednesday. That's going to feed into.
Weren't they doing something with Legos or something?
Yeah, it's a Lego, it's a first robotic Lego. So they built smaller robots.
I'm wondering if this community gets it out for this for like old retired guys.
Yeah.
Seriously, I mean, I don't know what, you say CAD-ing, I'm going, what's that? Yeah, I should learn that, yeah.
Do you still have a flip phone, Orin? Not that bad.
I got a dial phone at home, what do you?
I'm curious how, for most of these kids, was this their absolute first exposure to that kind of coding?
Yes.
Have they done any of that before?
Like there was one, there was one who knew like a lot of it.
Okay.
And then there was, all the rest of them were confused when they first started.
Yeah.
We were lucky to have people like Rohan who knew the coding on a much more in-depth level so that the rest of us could help out the kids who it was their first experience. And Rohan could help the people who already had that experience with coding. So we weren't just saying, oh, you already know it, you go do your own thing, right? We were having everybody get engaged in that process.
Very good.
The last thing I would share, they did a really, really nice job building relationships with these middle schoolers. These young, young students interacting with these upperclassmen. It just sets them up with a great experience when they get to be a high schooler.
I was just, yeah.
It was just, it's just awesome.
Echo the same thing. I hope you guys know how important you are because these kids looking up to you. And thank you, thank you for taking the time to do that with the kids. It's, it's awesome. So kudos to you all this week.
And finally, to build a program takes a lot of work. I mean, you're, you're literally building something at West Tonka right now. And it's a program that we want to flourish here. And so part of our line range plans is that there's a dedicated space for, you don't have to take that down and putting it back together, but that you have storage and also equipment to be making or designing what you're hoping to do here. So I think you're showing us the importance of this type of programming. There's obviously a number of kids that are interested and if we give you a dedicated space for it, we believe it's only going to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board? None. Then we'll move on to the reports. Our treasurer is only able to be here this evening, but provided a full report that Lauren's going to fill us in on.
So the donations for August twenty twenty-three, the Hilltop families donated to Hilltop Primary School, total of three thousand six hundred and forty dollars. The Charities Aid Foundation donated to the Mount Westonk High School, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Anonymous donation to Mount Westonk High School for sixty dollars. Anonymous donation to Community Ed Boys Volleyball for two hundred dollars. Anonymous state, anonymous donation to Community Ed Westonka Community Theater for two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And another anonymous donation to Community Ed Westonka Community Theater for two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. The Westonka Lions donated to Community Ed Westonka Community Theater, five thousand dollars. The Dietrich Family donated to Community Ed Music in the Park, two hundred dollars. Edward Jones donated to Community Ed Music in the Park, two hundred and fifty dollars. Patrick and Patricia Stroller donated to the M nine-one Memorial Scholarship, one thousand dollars. The Northwest Tonka Lions donated to the Northwest Tonka Lions Scholarship, six thousand dollars. Which Humbert donated to Larry Exel Memorial Scholarship, one hundred dollars. The Lions Club donated to the Captain's Club, four thousand dollars. Brand Royalties donated to the Captain's Club, four dollars and forty-three cents. And Claire Kaufman donated to the Captain's Club, twenty dollars. The Westonka Girls Hockey Boosters donated to the Westonka Girls Hockey Club, one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Cairo Center donated to the Hackett Dance Team, three hundred dollars. Grady Restoration donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, three hundred dollars. Gina Halverson donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, one hundred dollars. Decorating with Grace LLC donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. Steve Bedell donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. Surf Sock donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, three hundred dollars. Mount Mack and Net Clinic donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, team, one hundred and fifty dollars. The Cave at Westonka donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, three hundred dollars. Pop Industries donated to the Hackett's Dance Team, one hundred dollars. Anonymous donation to the Hackett's Dance Team, fifty dollars. JDP Electrical to the Hackett's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. Jubilee Foods to the Hackett's Dance Team, one hundred dollars. Mount Family Hardware to the Hackett's Dance Team, one hundred dollars. Blue Lagoon Marina to the Hackett's Dance Team, one hundred dollars. Innovative Marine Systems to the Hackett's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. And Fairway Mortgage to the Hackett's Dance Team, five hundred dollars. Special Olympics Minnesota donated to the Westonka Girls Sacra, six hundred and thirty dollars. And the Westonka Volleyball Boosters donated to the Volleyball Club, one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. The total cash donations for year to date twenty twenty-four at this time are forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Thank you, Orin. Next, we'll move on to the student rep report, Natalie, and not only did you get approved tonight, you get to come up and talk to us.
Thank you. All right, I'm super excited to give you an update on activities, arts, and academics at our school. Starting off with activities, we had our homecoming week last week. We started off with our coronation where Maisy Wheeler and Henry Mizel, our queen and king. We had our pep bus last week at the middle and high school and they were super successful. We had some new activities that we did. Our dress up days were really popular with students and we also had really great dance attendance with a lot of increase in school spirit. We had over three hundred and ninety students attend the dance. And we had a record-breaking carnival before the game on Friday with great participation and fundraising. And we had a different parade route this year, but it was very successful. Students' Senate is conducting elections for eighth graders this week until next week. Moving on to clubs, DECA Officers held an interest meeting for new members on September twenty-seventh. And then they have their first chapter meeting on October fourth. The robotics team is hosting an informational meeting tomorrow from six PM to seven PM. Letters of Love and Fellowship of Christian Athletes are having their first meetings on Wednesday, October fifth. The Environmental Club has its first meeting on Monday, October ninth. And National Honor Society had their first meeting on September thirteenth and will have a meeting next week. Moving on to arts, Mad Jazz additions were held last month and they began rehearsals on September nineteenth. They just had their first public performance at the Alumni Breakfast last week. Peter and the Star Catcher Edition, the first week of school, and they have been in rehearsals ever since. The show is coming up next weekend, October thirteenth to fifteenth, and is directed by Joe Lawrence and assisted by Jamie Harms. The show has twenty-one students on stage and five on the crew. Moving on to academics, forty-one Mount Westonka students just earned AP Scholar Awards this year. And two seniors were just named National Merit semifinalists. Moving on to athletics, the varsity football team has a four-to-one record after a really tough loss against Orno on Friday and Saturday for homecoming. They've had a great season so far with a great comeback to Providence last Friday. And they're currently ranked number five in Class 4A first state. The varsity volleyball team has a current record of thirteen and two. They are traveling to Orno tomorrow. And then they have a home game against Southwest Christian this Thursday. The varsity boys soccer team is having a great season. They have two home games this week against Watertown Mayor right now. And Southwest Christian on Thursday. The girls swim and dive team is currently ranked fifth in the state for Division A. They had a home meet against Watertown last Thursday. The girls tennis team just won seven-oh against their third team in a row and they start their first round of sections tomorrow. All six cross-country teams are very successful with the girls varsity being exceptionally successful. And they compete at Collinwood Park last Tuesday. Lastly, the girls soccer team is entering their final week of the regular season with two games tonight and Thursday.
Natalie's pretty humble, but she's one of those national merit.
Semifinals?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, so who's the other one, just so we know?
Cormac Schaefer.
Okay. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak and.
No problem. And as we normally, if you've got places to go and things to do, feel free to leave or stay.
Yeah, I have a soccer game.
I guess there's something to do.
Thank you.
Are there any committee reports? I'm trying to remember who's, who's on the, you're on Community Ed with the.
Yes.
Are you going to be there tomorrow?
Yeah, four-thirty.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're going to be there?
I'll, I'll be there for about half of it. I want grandparents who need to bring their kids to practice.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks, Orin. Financial report, Kathy.
Good evening, Board. We have a guest speaker tonight, but before I introduce Aaron, I'll give a quick financial report. The first thing I'll share with you is our October first enrollment. So we have the first month of the school year closed out already and this information displays again our October first count. The first cluster of charts on the far left-hand side are representing the primary school grades, early childhood through grade four. The next, on to the right, are middle school grades five through six, excuse me, five through seven, and then our high school grades eight through twelve. And the far right-hand column is our total enrollment. The blue column represents our final enrollment as of last school year. The orange column represents what we planned on as far as our estimated enrollment for the budget. And then lastly, the gray column is our count as of today. And you can see in the orange bar, we actually were expecting a decline in enrollment. And the reason for that is last spring, we graduated one of our largest classes and we had planned on a hundred and seventy kindergarteners. And I'm happy to report that as of today, our enrollment actually is very similar to last year. And in fact, when we processed the revised budget, if things stand as they are, we'll be including twenty-five additional students then in our adopted budget. So again, we're really pleased with our start of the school year and our stable enrollment.
That's awesome.
Financial data, revenues and expenditures through the end of September. We have received three million one hundred and sixty-three thousand or eight point five percent of our adopted budget. And expenditures are at seven million two hundred and eighty-three thousand or twenty point four percent of our budget. Both the revenue and expenditures are trending on track as compared to the two prior school years. Just a couple other items. Last month, you at the board meeting approved our levy at maximum. That information needed to be submitted to Hennepin County and the Department of Education by September thirtieth, which we did. They'll be processing the tax statements that property tax owners will receive. And we will be having our truth of taxation hearing at the beginning of our December fourth regular school board meeting. Later on your agenda, after the audits approved, you'll be, there'll be an action item to approve the audit. And school districts are required to publish our budget in the newspaper one week following the acceptance of the final audit. And our report will be displayed in Saturday's edition of the Lakers, so you can look forward to seeing that. And I'll open it up to any questions at this time. And if there aren't, I'll take this time now to introduce Aaron Dahl of Bergen KDB. He will be presenting a summary of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit. And on behalf of the Westonka School District, I'd like to personally thank Aaron for being here tonight. And also to him and his team for their professional manner in conducting the audit and their customer service. Bergen KDB, they share our same goal of, and values of being good stewards of public dollars and transparent reporting.
Kathy, and thank you, Board, for the opportunity to be your auditors again this year and thanks for the opportunity to present here tonight. I'll kind of walk through a few of the different reports that we issued our opinions on and then kind of walk through some of the trends and interesting financial data that we discovered this year. So starting with the audit results, so the first one, the independent auditors report, that's kind of why we're hired as auditors to give a opinion on your financial statements. And we're happy to report we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give as auditors. So a great job by Kathy and Pat and the rest of the finance team on achieving that unmodified opinion again this year. We also performed a single audit in accordance with uniform guidance. So the way that works is a single audit is required when a district has seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal expenditures or more. So we looked at one program this year, which was the special education cluster. And happy to report we had an unmodified opinion on that program as well with no findings. The next one is the government auditing standards report. We did have one finding there, which is one we've shown in the past as well, the lack of segregation of accounting duties. And we do have it at the lower level. So not a major concern, but it is something we do kind of point out to the board each year. And it's basically based on the overlap of duties. And the opportunity does exist based on the access and ability for someone to have more than one role within that financial reporting system. I do want to point out though, the district does have good mitigating controls in place with the checks and balances and reconciliations performed. So it's not, again, a huge concern of ours, but it is something we do point out. And along with that, the cost benefit of hiring the additional staff to kind of get rid of that comment probably isn't practical or something that is worth pursuing. We basically have that comment in one way, shape, or form for almost all of the districts we do audit. And then lastly, the Minnesota Legal Compliance Report. So that's where we look at things like collateral, bids, conflicts of interest, things of that nature. And again, happy to report no findings on the compliance side. Next, I'll get into some of the communication letter items and trends and topics. So the first chart here we have is the general education aid formula allowance. The largest single funding source for Minnesota school districts is the basic general education aid. Each year, the state legislature sets a basic formula allowance, which is shown here with the dollar amounts and the percentage increases. The total basic general education revenue is calculated by multiplying this formula allowance by the number of people units for which a district is entitled to. So this formula allowance, along with the number of students within the district, plays a big part in the amount of state aid that the district receives. As you can see from fiscal year twenty-three, you saw a two percent increase in that general education aid formula allowance. It had been two point five percent the previous year, but dropped back down to the kind of standard two percent for fiscal year twenty-three. For fiscal year twenty-four, you will see there is a four percent increase. So a nice jump there on the state aid side that you should be able to see in the upcoming year. Next, we have the student counts. So taking a look at the resident ADM and the ADM served. The total ADM served does include residents attending the district, non-resident enrollment option students, and then resident tuition students. So that's why you see a bit of a difference there between the total resident ADM and that total ADM served. As the charts indicate, the resident ADM did increase by four or point one percent, while the total ADM served decreased by six or point three percent. So pretty stable ADM student counts throughout the five years, which is pretty commendable, especially throwing in kind of the COVID years mixed in there. A lot of districts had students leave the district with homeschooling or transferring out to other districts. So commendable on that front and good to see that stabilization. Here it is in graphical form. So again, you can see pretty much straight across the board, the total resident ADM around that twenty-seven-hundred number and the total ADM. and the total ADM served around the 2,400 number. So over the five-year period, you'll see a bit of an increase from 2,689 up to 2,697. And then on the total side, the 2,362 up to the 2,412. Next, we'll dig into the general fund and we'll start with the sources of revenue here. Overall, the district's general fund revenues increased by about 40,000 or point one percent, so pretty similar to the prior year. The state revenues did increase by about 198,000 with that increase in general education aid along with an increase in special education aid. The local property tax revenue increased by about 326,000 for the year with an increase in the levy allocation for the general fund. And then the other revenue category decreased by 484,000. So that's the category where you'll see a lot of the federal aids. So a lot of that was a bit inflated in the past couple of years with a lot of those CARES funding and some of those COVID-related grants. Next, we just have kind of a pie graph here showing the revenue classification and the affiliated percentages. So as you can see, the state revenues sit at 62% and serve the majority of the revenues. Local property taxes around 30%, and then that other revenue category at 8%. And those 2023 numbers are relatively similar to the prior years, so pretty stagnant on the percentage base as well. Taking a look at the budget to actual results for the general fund. On the revenue side, that came in about 740,000 over the final amended budget. The largest variance by category was from the revenue from the federal sources due to an additional COVID testing grant that was not originally budgeted. The other local revenues were over budgeted by about 256,000 with more investment earnings than budgeted, so a good conservative approach there. And then the other revenue categories were relatively consistent with their budgeted amount. So you'll see a bit of, a little bit of a change with the taxes and state sources, but those were pretty much spot on when it came to the revenue side. Taking a look at the general fund expenditures, those exceeded the final amended budget by about 34,000. So again, pretty much spot on with what was anticipated. Taking a look at individual categories, the regular instruction was about 260,000 under budget due to there being less registration fees and contract and maintenance than planned. District support services came in about 194,000 under budget with fewer salary and benefit expenses with some open positions during the year. And then these were partially offset by an overage in pupil support services by about 345,000 and then sites and buildings by about 264,000. And both of those look like they were the result of having more capital-related expenditures and repair projects than initially anticipated. From the general fund operational side, we have the previous five years presented. The revenues again increased by point one percent with the expenditures increasing by 5.5%. And a lot of that had to do kind of with the inflationary costs for fiscal year 23. The general fund did experience an overall increase in fund balance by about 56,000, so kind of that third line item down. At the end of the fiscal year, the general fund had a fund balance of about 6.2 million, the bottom line there. Of this amount, about 50,000 represents non-spendable balances, which relates to inventory and prepaid items. The restricted fund balance for operating capital totaled about 478,000. And then student activities was around 483,000 for restricted purposes. And then the remaining unassigned fund balance of about 3.2 million. So as you can see, that increased by about 45,000 compared to fiscal year 22. So a bit of an increase there as well for the general fund. Next, we have the financial position and the cash and investments for the general fund for the past five years. So as you can see, the cash and investments increased again for fiscal year 23. That's one of those that can kind of fluctuate based on operations and the ins and outs around year end, so not a surprise there. The bottom line is the unassigned fund balance, which increased slightly as well, as I previously touched on. But for the most part, it's seen kind of a steady growth there, so not a lot of peaks and valleys when it comes to the unassigned fund balance. So good to see that stability there. Next, we have the unrestricted fund balance as a percent of the general fund expenditures, both for the West Tonka School District and then the school districts across the state as well in blue there. So historically, the district has been lower than the average of all Minnesota school districts, but did see an increase for fiscal year, or I'm sorry, saw a slight decrease for fiscal year 23. It dropped from 18.5% down to 17%. The fund balance policy for the district calls for a minimum of 8% and a maximum of 18%. So right in line with where things are planned to be, so. Next, I'll touch on the special revenue funds and starting with the food service fund here for the previous five years. For fiscal year 23, the food service revenues did decrease by 29.1%, while expenditures decreased by point six percent. The revenues did decrease as a result of less federal aid, while the expenditures remained relatively consistent. So fiscal year 22, you saw a lot of reimbursement for pretty much all of the meals that the district had and that kind of discontinued a little bit for fiscal year 23. So that's kind of why you saw the drop there. Even with that, the revenues did exceed expenditures by about $7,800 for the year with an addition of 10,000 from other financing sources as well. The fund balance ended at a little over 1.1 million at the end of the year. So again, good to see those positive operations for the food service fund. That's not always easy to do across the state to kind of have that self-supporting excess of revenues over expenditures. And lastly, we have the community service fund. Revenues here increased by about 406,000 for the year, due in large part to the increased levy allocation for this fund along with higher participation in programming and higher memberships for the West Tonka Activity Center in 2023. Expenditures did increase as well by 347,000 due to more expenditures for contracted services to help with that increased participation throughout the programming. So the result was an increase in fund balance of 135,000 for fiscal year 23. So again, good to see the community service fund rebound again in 2023. As you can kind of see, in 2020 and 2021, it was kind of rough with all the COVID impact. Some of those other financing sources were transfers from the general fund to kind of help stabilize the community service fund. But it's good to see us back on track and producing positive results in fiscal year 23. Lastly, we just have the overall net position of the district. So this includes all long-term assets and long-term liabilities of the district as well. Based on the bottom line, you can see the total net position did increase from a little over 15 million to over 23 million at the end of the year. But a lot of times, these numbers can fluctuate a lot with the pension amounts, some of the OPEB benefits that are played into that as well. So I always like to point out the net pension liability did increase by about 12 million for the year. But that's not something the district will ever have to write a check for. It's just something the state keeps track of and they seem to change the discount rates on that net pension liability quite often. So not of major importance. It's more the fund level I'd be concerned with on the district level, but we do have the total net position here as well. All right, with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments the board may have.
I have one on the general fund balance, you know, we have that we want to keep between eight and 18%. I noticed that all, like Minnesota, they were all up in the twenties, 23. Are we not where we should be or is our goal?
It's based on what the district is comfortable with. Like, yeah, I'm sure a lot of like the outstate schools aren't as concerned with that. And it's not always great to have a lot of extra funds set there too. That means it's not, you're not spending it on your teachers or capital projects that might be needed. So it is still a healthy fund balance. And like I said, it's based on what the district kind of strives to achieve and you're well within that range.
One, you know, one thing we've done, Kelly, is put some of those monies into restricted or designated. So like we have more funds, we put some more funds like into class size reduction. So that if we need to, class gets too big, we need to hire an extra teacher, we've got that funding. You know, we could put more into the unrestricted, but we want to designate some of that up there, yeah.
Right, yeah. And you do have a lot in those assigned sections as well. So assigned education, class size reduction, technology repairs, and then the West Tonka Wings Program. So you're already setting some of that aside for good purposes that will help the district.
One question I had there, it looks like student activities got moved up under staff development. Is that?
Yeah, that was kind of a change on the Minnesota side. So it used to have separate reporting, separate everything. It used to kind of be not, and now it's part of the general fund. So it's under board control where it's, before it was not.
Before it was a separate account then?
Yep, that was something that occurred throughout Minnesota. Yep, not just this district.
Well, thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Teacher, you ready, Mark?
Just give me a minute here and I'll get this, I'll have just a brief report for you. All right, tonight, just two brief updates for you. At your table is a handout that is from the Minnesota School of the Secondary and Principal Awards Association. And it's a summary of all the mandates that came through from the 2023 Minnesota Legislature. And it is something that we will be unpacking for the, not just this year, but multiple years. And it's a lot of wonderful things in there. And I just listed all the different categories that, so part of this very comprehensive legislation. I would suggest that if you needed a quick cheat sheet as to what's going on with those mandates, this is a great guide. It is a very nice summary. I mean, the Minnesota School Board Association has theirs, the government has theirs. I just find this one very succinct. And just a plug for our quarterly teaching and learning meeting in November. We'll go into more detail about what's in there at that meeting. But what I wanted to just pull out for you tonight are just a couple of things that are very relevant to our students and what I focus on. And there are new graduation requirements that are coming through that is starting for our current eighth graders at our high school that the current eighth graders and younger now will have a required earth science credit. So right now in eighth grade, we are offering probably about 13 sections of physical science because it's this group of students that took earth science from the first time in sixth grade. They took their middle school life science and now they're taking their physical science in eighth grade. That's a change. That'll be the first group that'll take a high school earth science course the next year. And that's across the state of Minnesota. That's a new requirement. And then another requirement that came through with the legislation is a required government and citizens course. Now, we offer 12th grade civics. And I'm going to say tonight, that's going to cover that requirement. But we'll learn more in the coming months from the Department of Ed as exactly what they're looking for. Definitely the new course requirement for graduation will be a personal finance course. And a lot of people have been waiting for that. And we don't have the parameters yet and the details of what needs to be offered. But think about a semester course that you'll have to complete on personal finance by the time you graduate. Now, we'll have to do some work about how we fit that into the schedule and how that looks for students. But that'll be something that probably will come to the board for approval when it's the right time to do that work.
So a question between, so the first one, it says required earth science. The legs to our offer government, offer personal finance. Does that mean the students, you, I'm mixing up requirement and offer?
Yeah, yeah, good catch, good catch. I just grabbed the language out of the, this document here.
Right.
I can replace offer with required.
So a student has, sometime in high school, a student has to take a personal finance course. Okay, see, I was looking at offer.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You may make it offer to me. I may not want it.
That's right, no, it's required.
Okay.
We will decide and figure out how to fit it in and where that happens and, but.
But then like the government one, you're saying you already have a civics course that you think would qualify.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm going to bank on that, but we'll get more clarification. Coming on to personal finance course and stuff like that, is that something we would tie in with our, our teaching staff to be at? Or would we draw in outside sources with banks coming in and talking and working? We, we would first start with our current teaching staff before that. Now, it would be great to have some real-life applications to bring financial people in or bankers in to really give a real understanding of what, what happens. But that will be a course as I think what you're making, you know, in personal finances, savings, mortgages, checking accounts. Time to, to have it. The, the other thing I just wanted to mention to you tonight is that you'll hear a lot about the READ Act. And that is, it's really a big deal. And it's the Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act. And it, it's a big deal because it's really zeroing in on ensuring all students can read at grade level by the time they graduate. And we talk a lot about all students can read by the time they reach grade three. This goes deeper into making sure beyond grade three, we're doing everything we can to make sure kids are reading at, at the proper level. The good news is, everything you're going to hear about in these requirements, we're already doing it. We're in great shape with this. So for example, one thing that we will formalize more is required training of all teachers and instructional support staff around reading instruction. So you look at those areas, phonetic awareness, phonics, reading fluency, comprehension, culture of responsive instruction. We do that already. The shift for us is going to be not only our teachers that teach reading, like our elementary staff, our special education staff, but we'll be bringing in, let's say, at the middle school, high school, our social studies teachers, our science teachers, our elective teachers. And we have a timeline of when we need to finish this. And the state is approving very specific trainings to use with our staff. And I would be the first one to tell you, there's a whole lot of detail to figure out as to how and when we're going to do this training. But we also have, right here in the West Metro, a great group of curriculum leaders, directors, administrators, and we're meeting on Friday. And we're going to be talking about this, like how are we going to do this? What does that look like? How do you interpret the statute? So more to come on that. But we're already doing this. It's a matter of figuring out how we do it beyond just our teachers that teach reading. So that's one piece. The other piece that comes as part of the requirements is required literacy screenings. Again, we already do that. We have our FastBridge assessment system. We screen our kids in math and reading in the fall and the spring, and that's what they're requiring. We do that in grades K through eight. And then beyond grade eight would be kids that are like in our access intervention program. So the screener is very important because that is where we have the first understanding of which kids are above grade level, which kids are not. And then we get into our whole discussion of multi-tier systems of support and what we're going to do about that. So FastBridge, the second diamond there, is, is an approved system by the Department of Ed for literacy screening. So that's a shift. That's, the Department of Ed is coming through. They're saying, this is the type of training you need to do. These are the approved methods. These are the approved screener assessment tools. FastBridge is one of them. And we've been using FastBridge for about seven years. And in the last arrow, we're required to implement progress monitoring. So progress monitoring is where we've identified students that are, are reading below grade level. We're delivering interventions to them. We progress monitor. So every two weeks, we would give them a very specific, short, little, called a subtest on a specific concept to see if they're making progress. That's all part of the multi-tier systems of support. Again, that becomes a requirement for all school systems across Minnesota who already are doing those things. So these are just examples of, of this READ Act. The last couple of things I'll just share with you, we can't just pick any reading program just because it feels good. It needs to be evidence-based. So we've, right now, the elementary level, we've just adopted the Wonders reading program. That is an evidence. That is an evidence-based literacy curriculum, we're in great shape with that. And then the last piece, which is really, it's really interesting what they're requiring of, of school systems. We have to employ a literacy lead, someone in the district that is identified as the person that's gonna lead the implementation of the READ Act. Well, we've had Natalie Buolo as our elementary academic literacy specialist for about ten years, and she does a marvelous job with our, our elementary buildings. And this year, we just hired Robert Bevers, and he's our full-time reading specialist at the high school. And I tell you, it is a pleasure having this, this gentleman work at our high school. I, we, we figured out how to support that staff, that staffing, and he is already just going to break guns, supporting the staff, giving training to our staff about reading strategies in the classroom, setting up intervention groups with kids that are reading below grade level. And right now, we're gonna use those two individuals as our literacy lead to help support this READ Act. So that's just a little taste, it was in that document, there's a lot more to unpack. But my message to you tonight is that we're in great shape. We have work to do, don't get me wrong, we have work to do, we have things to figure out, but we're in a strong position with this work and with these requirements. So the last thing I just wanted to share with you, as we've talked last year, we are in our second year of implementing the multi-tier systems of support. It's around social-emotional health, academics, behavioral health, and attendance. And for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have six specific goals that we're focusing on to take the next steps. And what I would just summarize for you is that we simply wanna go deeper into delivering tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions for students in the area of social-emotional health, behavior, and academics. And the one goal that I would highlight tonight is number two. Everything starts in the classroom. Everything starts with tier one intervention instruction in the classroom. And on our workshop day on October eighteenth, we're gonna be doing some training on tier one intervention instruction with our Park at the Carey Center with the U of M. They're coming in, they'll be working with our elementary staff that day and our high school staff on tier one intervention and instruction. Like what does it mean? Not so much in the area of academics, but what should we be doing in the area of social-emotional health and behavioral health in our classrooms? So I'll continue to come to these meetings and give you updates. At our quarterly TNL meeting, I'll go in more depth with these, these things. But again, my message is that we are in a strong position with these, these fronts, and some really good work that is happening. So that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get dizzy just listening to you talk about all of these things, and I'm so thankful for you and Kevin and the principals that keep all of this in motion. Thank you.
It's like, Dr. Callen out.
Yeah, there's constant changes and new directives and.
Kevin, you're on.
Well, as Natalie said, we just completed homecoming week, and it was really fantastic. But I, I wanna start by just saying that it's, it's been such a positive start to the school year. And you get into homecoming week, and it's this recognized week where you really try to make this a special, fun event for your students. It's a time to bring in community and alumni, and it's, it's really a part of strengthening what it is to be a West Tonka student, what it is to be a White Hawk. You're welcoming your Mohawks, you're welcoming your people that look at the district as Mount, and you bring yourself all together, and it's, makes you feel really, really proud that you were able to raise your kids in this community. As Natalie said, the week really kicks off on the Sunday before with coordination. And then in all the buildings, there's different events, so one of the things is dress-up days. And to give you a little texture of dress-up days, some of it is fun where I'm like, that doesn't seem that long ago, but it's Adam Sandler Day. And I'm like, I can do that pretty well, that doesn't need a dress-up day, I can probably do the Sandler Day. It's everything but a backpack day where kids challenge themselves of how they can carry their stuff in anything but a backpack. So some of them are coming around with crock pots or some, I mean, the most bizarre thing that they can put their stuffs in. And so it's just, it's good humor. And you also have some things that are so touching, which is, we have students that dress up as your favorite teacher, your favorite staff member. And just in our last newsletter, we have a Hilltop student dressing up as Mr. Troy. And it just shows you everywhere, anywhere, there are relationships that are impactful being made, and that's what I think of West Tonka. And so it's a time for us to celebrate some of those connections. We have a lot of sporting events and activities that have their own traditions, but with all these home games, we had a back-to-back soccer like you're seeing again today, but in the middle of it, all of our parents, I think Colin Mather might have started this where there was a chili cook-off, and you have twenty-one, I believe, crock pots of different chili that they're competing between the boys and the girls. And it's just a way of bringing families together in connection, and it just feels so good. And so you get these different experiences going through the, the week, and then you start bringing up to, as you heard, the parade route had to change, and we had some road construction, and our students did a great job with that effort, staff did. We had our alumni breakfast, which is always so much fun, because you have some people that you've never met before, and some people will never miss one of these alumni breakfasts. And both are fantastic when they're coming in and you get to be able to connect with them. We, we get into the football game, and you know, that, that is something that I was so excited for, but really tired about, because we knew with great opportunity comes great responsibility. And we knew that night, we were gonna have the largest attendance, is what we projected at, ever at, had our field. We knew, we knew that there'd be a lot of excitement. We had rivalry between Orno and Mount. We had two four-and-oh football teams. We had what appeared at the time to be really good weather. And in that, we wanted this to be a time that just went perfect. Weeks before that, we took time to meet as a staff of how are we gonna manage the crowd? How can we make sure that they're gonna stay safe? We had pre-meetings with our law enforcement of how we could handle different circumstances. And I really hope to our community that was invisible, but on the back end of it, there is just hours and hours and hours of planning of how you're gonna manage these things. And with it, it was tested. We ran in like a lot of communities, some weather. There was the one thing that we thought we were kinda safe from when we were looking at the weather. And then I talked to the National Weather Service at about noon, one o'clock. Looks like it's going north, Kevin, and also might get a little bit of rain. So you go into the excitement, and you're at the first quarter, and you got this drive that the boys take down, and we get the first touchdown in, and then all of a sudden, they're coming back, and you got thirteen-seven at the end of first quarter. And this is how West Tonka works. We have people that are watching the weather, and I'm standing there, and the parent says, Kevin, you're watching the weather? I said, yeah, we got watching weather. They said, Hutchinson, yep, sixty mile an hour winds, mhm. And so all of a sudden, we worked the script, and Todd said, okay, everyone, pay attention, you're gonna be making an exit. What Todd didn't know is right at that moment, we made the decision, I made the decision that we need to postpone this. And how it works with the postponing or a canceling, one is determined by lightning, but there's also just the concern about inclement weather. And the one thing that we didn't know is our stadium has never been that full before, and how long would it take, and how orderly would it take to get everybody where they were? So even with all the pre-training and people were connected, we, we made that decision. And the answer is it takes fifteen minutes to drain probably over four thousand people out of that stadium. It takes a longer time if you're in the middle of the stands. And in the bond, we have stands that'll have a center drain out, so on both ends and a center drain out, which will allow that to go much faster. Different people were instructed to take people through different gates. And I'm so proud of our two communities because overall, people were very orderly, and they were, at first, I'm sure a lot of people were, you gotta be kidding me, we're gonna do this. It was such an electric environment, and that was the last thing people wanted. But they, they went along with the flow, and by the time they got in their cars, they said, boy, I'm glad I'm in the car. And so sometimes those decisions, I make enough weather decisions that I know that sometimes it's the right call, sometimes why did you make that call? And what the real thing was is we knew we had a lot of people in there that we had to make sure they got to their cars or in the school safe. From that evening, we had Orno students and West Tonka students, because as you can imagine, at a football game, kids go with kids. And when you have that many people close to a cell tower, you overwhelm the cell tower, so people don't have connection. And we understood that this could be a scary thing for some students, some families, of how they're gonna reunite. And so kids are in the school. We have, our staff and our supervisors did a wonderful thing of just supervising. And what we tried to do is get the game in that night. But you have to wait a half an hour after the last lightning strike if the lightning is within a certain proximity. And we watched it, and we said, we're gonna make a call at nine o'clock. And then it looked like that front was gonna go by us and that we could get this in yet. So we said nine fifteen, and after doing that three times at nine forty-five, we said, this is gonna go in, and it would've. I mean, it was still lightning probably well into the past eleven. And so we moved the game obviously to Saturday at one o'clock. And just so, so proud of just all the individual stories that you heard from so many people that tried to help people, bringing people in their cars, trying to help them connect with parents. And it was the community that we know that we belong to, but it's just another example of it. Saturday, we didn't have to worry about weather except that it was hot. I would say it was like an August scrimmage versus an October football game. And we were able to complete the game, and we still had a nice crowd. It was too bad we couldn't finish it because the crowd was so electric that night, which was so incredibly fun. One thing when people are coming into our stadium, there's a couple of things that we heard. One is that we do homecoming really well. A lot of people were really impressed with what's set up for kids, how the boosters group said, we, we were grilling it, we did over five hundred, no, we did five hundred hot dogs. The concession stands in the quarter and a half almost got, I mean, it was just about depleted. I mean, there's only so much. And so we went through a lot of stuff very quick, but people were very, very impressed with the environment. And I think people were really impressed with how we were able to evacuate the area. Now, obviously, getting out of the parking lot took a really long time, and so we know, we know that. But one thing that this does provide us is the opportunity to work with Minnetrista Police and our staff about constant training. And I would just share with the board that we take this exercise, and we review, and we try to plan for different events. And what this gives us is a little bit of a gauge of evacuating a mass group of people, how that works, and what are some of the challenges. On the challenge of cell phone towers, one thing that is interested is Orno, Minnetrista, Mount Fire, and the West Tonka School District all have a connection to what's called FirstNet. And FirstNet allows you to go to the top of the list of the cell tower, if that's a case of emergency, for first responders and like school districts. And so one thing that we're looking at is bringing this on so our staff is connected on these kind of cellular walkies that we can use, which it can cover range in classrooms. But you can imagine at the time of emergency, anybody that was trying to make phone calls in there, you got through and then you were dropped, maybe you completed it, maybe you never could get through. But those are certain experiences that you can feel a little bit of the rhythm of what an emergency would feel like. So just wanted to share with the board, homecoming was incredibly special on so many accounts. This one provided us a game that became a learning opportunity for us. We're pleased, when I talked to the police, there was not an accident involving the cars as they were leaving, and we did not get a report from a parent that, just a lot of positive reports. And so there obviously are always a few things, so I'm not gonna say that everything is, was perfect, but it was really, really good. And I, I wanna thank, there's too many to thank, to call them out by name, but there's a lot of people involved in this. You look at Student Senate of what those students do to put on a homecoming week, and it's really impressive, their advisors, the admin, the staff members, just a lot of people gave a lot of themselves to make it a special week, and I think it was. You have three action items, one is to accept the audit, one is to approve the election judges, and then lastly, to improve our contract with our teachers. The audit you saw presented here today, compliment again to Kathy, Pat, and team. That's an incredibly, that's a wonderful audit, probably one of the best I've seen in my eighteen years as a superintendent, and I, I thank you. I also would say with the election judges, we follow the statute of how they're selected, which means they were involved in a general election with the city election the year before. These are people that we reach out to, and they volunteered to be part of it. And so we work on those that have served in the past election, and they, we send out a message to them, and they accept that. And then our contract with our teachers, we, we feel good that we are able to come to an agreement that recognizes the competitiveness right now for staffing, and that we try to stay competitive in our area. And by that, we mean we have some school districts to the west and school districts to the east. And we know that families that establish themselves here have a lot of different options. We wanna be a competitive option where we know that there's districts to our east that are gonna probably have a higher pay scale, but that we wanna be in a range that's competitive, that they would say, we like it at West Tonka, and we feel like we have a competitive contract. And so what we did in this contract is tried to ensure that we fell in between some of the west and the east here, and then we put two and a half percent per year. We looked at sick leave, and we fell below what a lot of the districts in the area offered for sick leave, so we made an adjustment to that. We made a little bit of an adjustment to bereadment leave, and those are some of the notable changes. In the end, we feel like this contract negotiation, first of all, is approved by the teachers here today, and so we bring it to the board. But this doesn't put you at the top of that group, but it also keeps us in a place where I think we've been able to manage in the past, and I think our staff are appreciative. So wanna thank Ralph and Gary for being part of those teacher negotiations. It was, it was a constructive process. Any questions on things that I shared or other?
Just that, that discussion item B, we do a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay.
Quick comment, I was so surprised. I thought our middle school students were louder at the football game than our high schools. And maybe I was sitting there, but I'm like, who is that? You know, I'm used to like little kids, and it was this whole huge, they're starting their own chants? I'm like, okay, this is awesome. I haven't seen that before, that's so cool.
The energy level was crazy.
Yeah.
I think my daughter would have taken exception at that stage, but that's what we, that's what we want. But one thing, one thing to your credit, on Saturday, when we had the kids here, all of a sudden, we had the cheerleaders, and we had the homecoming corps, we had cheerleaders out there, these different layers, and it was a time where we needed energy, and sure enough, they combined the middle school and the high school, and it was the back row, not the front row. That's a, let's go White Hawks! And this eighth grader, or I'm guessing eighth, ninth grader, started the whole crew up. So I did witness some.
So fun.
When did I read in the paper, I think eighteen teams in the metro area were postponed that night?
Yes.
Reschedule. That was scary. A couple for Monday, so it wasn't that.
And you look at, I mean, part of it is saying, okay, teams were gonna be there, but officials and all the different people that work in event, your chain crew, I mean, these aren't just interchangeable parts you need to have, so officials are hard to find for anything right now?
A strange weekend, and then you got Sunday, you got the Twin City Marathon canceled for heat.
And the hot dogs, we probably could've gone at least fifty to a hundred more. I mean, it was sad, I had to go out and go, sorry, from here on back, we're done.
That crew was impressive, by the way, they, they served really fast, really fast. That crew was impressive, by the way, they, they served really fast, really fast.
Super fun.
Well, Gary, you were involved in that?
Heidi and I were.
You, you did.
Yeah, very fun, yeah.
All right, chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Move on to discussion items here. Discussion item A, Chair moves for approval of Action Item 9A, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Audit Report, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of Action Item 9B, Approval of the Election Judges for the November 7th, 2023 General and Special Election, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, just need to know that you're voting in favor or against this motion for election judges. Kelly Vovee?
Aye.
Brian Carlson?
Aye.
Lauren Davis is an aye, Ralph Harrison is absent, Heidi Marty?
Aye.
Brian Roth?
Aye.
And Gary Woler?
Aye.
So, the motion carries, six to zero with one person absent.
Thank you, Lauren.
Emily, is there anything that was stated or something you would want added on this?
No, that was perfect.
Will there be something for me to sign on that, then?
No.
It'll be in the minutes?
Yes.
Chairman, I wonder for 9C, I need to abstain for that one.
Okay. Chair moves for approval of Action 9C, Approval of 2023 Contract Between West Tonka Education Minnesota and the School Board of Independent School District 277, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ryan Staves and Ralph is absent, okay.
Awesome. Anybody else have anything else to come before the board here?
I thought it was really fun to see the robotics.
Oh, that was so cool. I was seriously, I think they should do, Q and A should do one for adults.
You got some time on your hands?
I got some time on my hands, yeah.
My granddaughter was talking about the little echo thing.
Yeah.
I, I sit there and I couldn't figure out what she was talking about, now, now it all makes sense.
I told the students who were here, I told them, you know, my youngest graduated, Erin graduated in 2010, and Erin would get in trouble in junior high school or middle school because the teacher'd be teaching, and he'd be like taking a pen apart to see what, how it was working, but then, you know, she'd ask a question, and he'd answer, but he was always wanting to do stuff with his hands, and he just, you know, he was about, you know, about 10 years too, too early for all of the robotics and the engineering courses and things, I'm so excited for this generation that we keep building and adding in that area, because I think that's just, that's so exciting, I think.
How do you not got the witness stone at the convention center, the robotics, they were just, they said, hey, you wanna take the remote controls, I said, no, this is busted.
Well, I'm looking at the new bond and wanting to add, you know, courses in some of those areas and stuff, I mean, that to me is just so exciting, that we keep moving forward in those areas.
Well, I move for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.